Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. We begin our city council meeting with a prayer and then pledge, if you'd like to join me in prayer. Gracious Father, we thank you for this past holiday, Lord, special time here in the city of Saginaw, and we thank you for that. We thank you for all our city employees. We ask you to keep them safe and under your will, and we ask that you be with the city council as we deliberate the business before us tonight. We ask this in your name. Amen. All right, Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Millen.
Here.
Councilmember Tibbs.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Mayor Protem Clock.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Bryant.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Humphries.
Here.
Mayor Browning.
Here.
We have nine members present, zero absent.
And I'd like to remind the audience and fellow council members, now is a good time to take our electronic devices we have and go ahead and turn those down or off to prevent from interfering with the tonight's business. And...
I do, Mayor, thank you. The next regular city council meeting will be Monday, April 16th at 6:30 PM. And in preparation for the fiscal year 2018 and 2019 budget presentations and process, the May meeting schedule has been set for Monday, May 7th with a committee of the whole meeting at 5:00 PM and a regular meeting at 6:30 PM. And on Monday, May 14th, a committee of the whole meeting at 5:00 PM. And Monday, May 21st, a regular council meeting at 6:30 PM. The 2018 yard waste service began this week with collection on the same day as your regular trash day. Yard waste must be in paper yard waste bags or in 35 gallon or smaller garbage cans, not weighing more than 50 pounds with a yard waste sticker affixed to the front of the can. Yard waste stickers are available at the city clerk's office. Also, the city compost site is now open with hours Monday through Friday at 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And Saturday hours of 8:00 AM until noon during the months of April, May, October, and November. During the months of June through September, the compost site will be open the second and fourth Saturdays of each month from 8:00 AM until noon. Mayor, we have public hearings now.
All right, and remind the audience... Joining us tonight, the purpose of a public hearing is for the public to address council as a whole and for council to receive comments for consideration when action may be taken. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the hearing. Begin by stating your name. The main presenter or designated representative will be allowed 15 minutes. Other speakers will be limited to five minutes. Speakers may ask general questions but shall not ask questions of individual council members, city staff, or the audience. And the public hearing is not a question and answer session. With that, Madam Clerk?
Our public hearing tonight is a request for an obsolete property rehabilitation certificate at 409 Adams Street.
Good evening, Mayor Browning, Mayor Protem Clock, council members, and manager Morales. I'm Tom Miller with Saginaw Future. I'm here tonight to speak about the obsolete property rehabilitation act request. The obsolete property rehabilitation act, or OPRAs, provides for a tax incentive to encourage the redevelopment of obsolete buildings that are contaminated, blighted, or functionally obsolete. This requires a two-step process. The first step is for council to create an Oprah district, which you approved at a previous meeting. And the second step before you tonight is to consider the actual application for exemption. If approved, the Oprah certificate would freeze the property tax for up to 12 years. The Oprah law was enacted to encourage individuals or businesses to rehabilitate buildings which without new investment might be destined for demolition. Because of the tax cap granting of any Oprah certificate removes the property from the ad valorem tax role and creates a new revenue stream for the city of Saginaw. A little bit about this project, which I told you about last time, but just as a reminder, it will renovate nearly one square block in Old Town. The project will entail almost $1 million in renovations and will add 12 to 13 new market rate rental units to the riverfront. The project is being led by Alex DePerry, who apologizes that he couldn't be here tonight. He lives in Ann Arbor and had another meeting. He's the president of Ann Arbor Builders, and they're the same developer group that developed the northeast corner of Corton, Michigan. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to comment about the obsolete property rehabilitation certificate at 409 Adams Street? Second time, is there anyone that would like to make comments reference the meeting? And third and final time, is there anyone that wants to address the council, reference the obsolete property rehabilitation certificate at 409 Adams Street? Being none, I need a motion to close the hearing.
Moved.
Been moved and supported to close the hearing. Is there any further comments? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
We are now at personal appearances.
And for personal appearances, we begin tonight's business. We welcome your thoughts and input. If you come to the podium, please introduce yourself and state your home address. To be helpful, let us know if you will be speaking solely or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure to cover your main points. Hearing from our citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. And finally, since you are speaking as a representative to all our citizens, we ask you to be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTV, and to this council so that we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will refer to city staff. Madam Clerk?
Our first speaker is Karen Lawrence Webster. Here is Angie Miller.
Good evening. My name is Angie Miller. I'm the president of the Mid-Michigan Area Labor Council, which has an office at 1614 Mershan in Saginaw. I stand before you today to tell you about a meal packing event recently held here in the city of Saginaw. On Wednesday, March 7th, approximately 150 volunteers came together to package up meals for distribution to food pantries in Saginaw, Bay, and Genesee Counties. The event was organized by the United Way Labor Liaisons of the three counties, and the volunteers were a combination of members of local unions and community partners. The funding for the program was provided by union groups across the region. This program is an important reminder of how working people and the labor community give back to our neighbors. Food pantries often struggle to get donations following the holiday season and find their stores low despite the continued need for food assistance throughout the year. It was our hope that by holding an event in March, we could help support these pantries as they continue their important work. The March 7th event is a true example of many hands making light work. Looking at packaging a large number of meals can be a daunting task, but with the large number of volunteers, we were able to package 42,200 meals in two and a half hours. Not only did we get all the meals packed, but the volunteers had a great time. With the volunteers' input, we are looking forward to doing the same type of event next year. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Leslie Thomas.
Hello, my name is Leslie Thomas. I reside at 2635 Hadley Street in the city of Saginaw. Again, I'm a resident of Saginaw, and I want to call the issue of trash and debris to the attention of the city council members. I have called the city complaint line many times over the past several years, and I'm just not satisfied with the progress I've made, which is why I'm speaking today. The businesses near my home include Kingston Junkyard at 1319 South 15th. Items refused by Kingston are sometimes illegally dumped onto lots on Hadley and 15th Streets. I caught one person in the act a few years ago, and I called the police. Many of these criminals are now clever enough to wait until dark, so there are no witnesses. Kingston also has trash on their property. Family Dollar located at 2447 East Remington, this business has trash on their own lot, which subsequently ends up on adjacent lots. I have complained numerous times to their headquarters. I was told that they only cut grass once per month at the store on Holland, or excuse me, on Remington. I've witnessed the landscaping company mowing, not picking up trash. I have not witnessed this lack of maintenance and grooming to the Family Dollar stores on the west side of Saginaw. Any reasonable person would know mowing grass once per month is not sufficient. Food Basket, 2475 East Remington. Trash and broken glass in the parking lot are the main issues, as well as the blowing debris to other lots. Blue Diamond at 1313 Cumberland, trash and broken glass in the parking lot are the main issues, as well as blowing debris to other lots. As stated above, many of the adjacent lots to the businesses, as well as the lots where the businesses reside, are full of trash and debris, and some are owned by the county land bank. I took my nieces and nephews out this past Saturday morning just to collect as much trash as we could. We left with three huge bags in about an hour's time. My partner and I pick up trash up and down Hadley Street to ensure our small areas maintained. We have also purchased signs stating no dumping in an attempt to deter individuals from this criminal activity. My request, the city and the county should collectively ride around periodically to ensure properties are well-maintained. Yes, the citizens should be accountable to a point, but it is not the citizens' responsibility to find their neighbors nor the businesses in the east side neighborhoods. The business owners should be fined when they are in violation of ordinances. Installing cameras in certain areas, as well as posting signs, may also help this cause. The county land bank must also be held responsible and to the same standards as homeowners, as well as those I am requesting for the businesses. Thank you for your time and attention.
Remarks of council.
And council, a reminder that we are limited to five minutes, and tonight we begin with Michael Balls.
Read me. Ms. Thomas, I hope that your concerns will be met, and I'm sure the city manager sent you a letter. Maybe we can find out if we can get people to pick up their trash in that area. Angie, I'd like to thank you and the unions for doing what you are doing. If I'm not mistaken, you guys are local 699 that morning. I'm at local union hall, and I'm real proud of you guys for doing what you are doing for the community. Thank you very much. Other than that, I really don't have any other comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. It's good to be back. Our last meeting was Student Government Day, which is always a really, really fun day to be there at city council. But right after Student Government Day, we headed to the MML conference, myself, Brenda Moore, the mayor, and Councilman Balls. And we had a great time, sat in a lot of sessions, learning about everything from raising the age to cybersecurity. So it was a really good conference. I was glad to be there and finish up my first year of the Elected Officials Academy. The weekend just before, I had wrapped up a program at Michigan State University, which is the political leadership program. So we traveled all across the state. I'm glad that's done so we can dig a little bit deeper into MML and that Elected Officials Academy. Since we've been back from that, I had the opportunity to stop by Gideon Christ Community Church. They were honoring several people in the community, law enforcement, and first responders, so we got to have a great day celebrating the community and those who really put their life on the line, so it was a great day. Also, Beautification Day is coming very fast. I've had a chance to work with city staff. We've had a few planning meetings already this year, but Beautification Day this year is going to be Friday, May 18th, with a rain date of Friday, June 1st, so we're looking forward to everybody joining us for a great day. Thanks so much to our public speakers, Ms. Miller. You always come and give us the latest as to what's going on in union participation activities, so thank you for that. And also, Ms. Thomas, we hope that somebody will get back with you, the manager and his staff. So thank you so much. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Our public speaker is Ms. Miller. Ms. Thomas, thank you so much. Ms. Miller, we know you do so, so much for the community. Ms. Thomas, you're not, I'm sure that the manager will get with that. That's always been a concern, and I'm sure that they'll get with you on that. Last week, well, two weeks ago, I left and I went to MML on Monday evening. The workshops were fantastic, as Councilman Bryant said. I had the opportunity to give a special award out to one of our elected officials in Lansing. It was really a heartfelt roomful because for a change, we're trying to go across the board and do for all, not just one. So that was really good. I did receive my third. I've got one more level to complete, so I did receive that, and I was the only graduate in Level 3, which is government, which is the government part. Excited about that. On Saturday, I'm sorry, Sunday, March 22nd, I had the opportunity to represent the city at anniversary of Pastor Strobes, who is the minister at Tabernacle Baptist Church. This was his first year anniversary. It was a real nice affair, and he sends his thank you in his regards to the citizens and the city for acknowledging his day. That's it, Mayor.
Okay. And Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. However, today, I think I'll pass.
I shall too. I will too.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, I thank you, Ms. Thomas, for sharing your concerns with us. I guess as a member of city council, I mean, I guess I would encourage and support any increase in funding, specifically the monthly trash drop-off that happens across the street. I know there's a logistic issue there, and I don't know if finances would support it or not, but I guess, how I see it, I think they're all interconnected to an extent. If, I guess in my opinion, if something should, if that should go away, issues like this would just probably increase, and that's just an assumption on my part. But I guess for me personally, as a member of city council, I would support any increased funding in maintaining the monthly trash drop-off that we offer city residents. I guess my only other point, and it's a very important point, is that this month is Sex Assault Awareness Month. One in six women are victims of a sexual assault. One in 33 men are victims of some type of sexual assault. You know, it's one of those crimes where we can have a million officers, but it's just something that is very personal and discreet, but yet profound. So I guess I would encourage residents to continue to support local organizations that specializes in supporting the men and women who are victims of such heinous crimes, specifically the underground railroad. So if you have an opportunity, I just encourage everyone to support those organizations that support those victims. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It may not seem like it from some of the weather lately, but spring is here, and I wanted to congratulate the Westside Civic Association and the neighborhood associations who assisted them with the Easter egg hunt at the courthouse on Saturday. The neighborhood associations help volunteer to fill the eggs for that, and they accomplish many thousands of those. They have regular weekly and biweekly times they get together for that, so that's a real project for them every spring. I wanted to thank the mayor and the council people who represented Saginaw at the Michigan Municipal League meetings. That's very important for us, and they always bring back good information for us and keep our flag flying there. And I would be remiss if I did not give a shout-out to the Wolverines for tonight's game. I didn't want to take sides when there was more than one team in the tournament yet, Well, I was going to pass, but I feel as if somebody threw down the gauntlet. As the father of a 1995 graduate of Villanova, go Wildcats. That's all I've got.
Thank you, council members that were able to make the groundbreaking last Monday downtown, the ground shoveling, I'm sorry. We really didn't break the ground in the parking lot, but we did put some shovels in some dirt, and that was good. Long awaited, Delta College now has had their ceremony, and within the next, and city manager, Mr. Morales, will have more information on that later, but we'll be breaking ground, and we're going to see some real progress there on East Genesee, very much needed downtown and to our citizens. So we're really, really excited about that new investments that we are getting in the downtown area. Also, on April 21st, Kingdom Builders Ministries Incorporated, over at 14th and James, will be planting 150 fruit trees. 150 fruit trees. And so everyone is invited. They're looking for volunteers also, but they have 150 trees to go in. It starts at 10:00 in the morning on April 21st, and lunch is included. So if you have a chance to participate, please take a look at that. I believe that is on a Saturday. But anyways, so we have that, mark that down. I did get an invitation from the Saginaw County's 21st Annual Foster Grandparents Program. They have a recognition dinner and award celebration for the foster grandparents. It's a great event. On Friday, May 18th, at 6:00 PM at the Horizon Conference Center. You can contact me if you'd like some more information on that. We are getting information, and I know it's going to be out on the website for Waste Management, but this starts the season now where you're going to be able to drop off many of your items that normally aren't picked up, including the different paints and electronic devices, household hazardous waste, et cetera. So if you would simply go to Waste Management, their website, this is on there, and you can find the dates and everything for that. April 21st also is Earth Day Celebration, and they're going to have an event at the Saginaw Children's Zoo. And free admission to the first 400 people who bring a recyclable drink container. So lots of events going on in the city. This coming Monday, I'm sorry, next Monday, council starts the National Crime Victims' Rights Week, and that will kick off at 12:00 noon on the steps of City Hall, that I understand. And so I am not able to attend. We do have a proclamation we'd like to read if Mayor Protem, if you're available, or any council member is able to attend. I'd appreciate someone reading that council or reading the proclamation for that very special event here. And because she's already told you all about this, took everything, I had a whole speech given out, but that's okay. At the conference, MML conference, Councilwoman Brenda Moore has really stepped up a lot and has been very involved with the MML, Michigan Municipal League, and on the Board of Directors, I believe, and so we're really excited. One of the luncheons we had with about 500 people there, they called everyone up who received their Level 1 awards. Oh, there must have been 15 or 18 people get up there and receive their Level 1 awards. After that was Level 2, and probably just as many, well, not quite as many got up for that one there. And then came Level 3. And Level 3 is 100 hours of class and training, and there was only one person who was called up to the stage. Councilwoman Brenda Moore, as part, and let me read this real quickly. Elected Officials Academy, the Michigan Municipal League hereby certifies that Brenda Moore has successfully completed all the requirements set forth by the Elected Officials Academy Advisory Board for the Level 3, the Governance Award of the Elected Official Academy. And she received this very nice plaque. I'm going to present it to her again, and also a nice pin. So we're very proud of you, Brenda. Brenda has brought MML basically to Saginaw. I mean, we've always been a member, but a lot of activities have been happening elsewhere, and because of Councilwoman Brenda Moore's involvement, some of these activities are now coming to Saginaw, and we benefit greatly from that, and we look forward to continuing with that. And Councilman Clint Bryant, very excited that you have started the process. You're way behind, Brenda, but if she kept all her tests, you might want to talk to her, just in case. I don't know if she did that, but... So Level 1. So you got Level 1. So we got two more there to go. And I think there's another level yet, Brenda, isn't there? Level 4?
Level 4.
Well, okay.
(Inaudible).
There you go.
(Inaudible).
Wow, appreciate that. Good luck out there. And with that, Madam Clerk?
We are at reports from manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I will mention that in the springtime, we do get a lot of complaints about litter, and it doesn't limit itself to one side of the river or the other, so we treat all of those complaints the same. As you know, we don't have a very big staff in the city to do the cleanups, the environmental group. The environmental section is pretty limited, I think maybe about three or four employees total for the whole city. So we do count on citizens to do a lot of that cleanup, and I know a number of you volunteer to do those cleanups. But as we get the complaints in, we do answer them as quickly as we can, and we have issued citations to individuals, businesses, and so on and so forth. We've tried to work with different companies. I'm sure you all know which ones are the biggest issues throughout the city, so we'll continue to do that as we have staff to do. Also, I will mention that the Saginaw Police Department, April Officer of the Month is Officer Jordan Engelhardt, and the citizen employee at the police department for the quarter is Kathy Starling. Officer Engelhardt was on a call for a home invasion and waiting for backup when he heard a shot fired and pursued the individual on his own after a short foot chase apprehended him. So great job by him. And I do get these incidents as they happen from the chief, so I do get these. Usually, chiefs send them to me each day, and I recall that incident. A great job by Officer Engelhardt. The 2018 Police Officer of the Year, chief had sent that out to the police department staff, as well as Officer Brad Holt. I'm sure a number of you know him. And the Civilian of the Year is Mary Coyle. And you'll hear more about them at the police awards ceremony, and that's Thursday, May 10th, if you want to get it on your calendars early. It's Thursday, May 10th at 10:00 AM. The city also received the Government Finance Officer Association Budget Award. GFoa announced that the city received the Distinguished Presentation Award for its budget for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017, and this is the 10th year in a row that the city has received this award. In order to receive the budget award, the city must achieve the highest principles of governmental budgeting. These guidelines are designed to assess how well a city's... These guidelines are designed to assess how well a city's budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device. The budget documents must, must be rated proficient in all four categories and the 14 mandatory criteria within those categories to receive the award. So, congratulations to, uh, Ms. Jones and her staff again. She's, um, and, uh, she's been, uh, putting together all of those budgets that has received the award for the city. So, good job by her again. And, um, congratulations to Delta College. As the mayor said, they had their groundbreaking, uh, downtown last week. Uh, it's been a long process to get this started. Um, the city started doing presentations to Delta College Board in 2013, so, I think it was December, so it's, that's almost been five years. But, I'm glad that they will be starting. They will be breaking, actually breaking ground after the frost freeze is lifted, so probably in three or four weeks, um, they'll have equipment down there. The project is projected to take about a year. The building should be open in the spring or summer of 2019 and classes, uh, to begin in the fall of 2019. The project is, um, managed by Spence Brothers. And, um, I think there was really good attendance for the event. Those of you who went, um, saw that and, including, um, Congressman Kildee was there, Congressman Molinar attended, uh, State Senator Horn and State Representative Guerra and several local, um, city and county elected officials and business leaders from downtown. So, I thought it was a really good event, uh, for downtown and a good kickoff. And hopefully, um, we'll be able to have as many people at the ribbon cutting, uh, for that, uh, next spring. And, um, echoing Councilman Melm, I'd say we have, uh, in, in the room tonight, at least for Michigan graduates, so, we wouldn't be able to, uh, have clean water and sewer treated in the city or engineering projects done, so, uh, I'd say go blue, but if win or lose, it's always great to be a Michigan Wolverine. And that concludes the management update.
Yeah. I asked for a couple of talking points because we were asked, I was asked to speak along with the other ones and I asked, uh, Tim for, just a couple of speaking points. And they were wonderful and, uh, so I figured, okay, this is real short. This is good. This is just what I need. And, uh, Senator, uh, Kildee was up there. He went 40 seconds. Uh, Congressman Molinar, maybe, maybe 30 seconds. Ken Horn, I've never seen Ken do anything less than what he did. I mean, he did like a half, a half a minute. And then I got up there and proceeded to talk for the next two minutes. Uh, so, uh, but I appreciate that because it was very well, uh, done. The whole thing was, uh, well done and it was important to stress to them the importance of Delta College downtown to our community and, and our riverfront district. Uh, I mean, it's, uh, this is, uh, just a, a wonderful opportunity and thanks for being there, Tim. Thanks for those wonderful comments that I was able to express. Madam Clerk.
Yeah. The consent agenda.
And the agenda has been available, uh, at City Hall and on city's website and on SGTV, Channel 191. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
Been moved before.
Been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? Any exceptions? Being none? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, we are now at Reports from Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
And, uh, are there any, uh, verbal reports from any of our council members, reference any of your commissions or boards, anything you'd like to share at this time? Being none?
We are at consideration of passing of ordinances and we do have one tonight. It's an ordinance to repeal and add new Section 153.460, Riverfront Mixed Use District of Chapter 153 zoning regulations.
And need a motion to adopt.
Been moved before.
Been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Being done? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Next is resolutions and we do have one tonight. It's authorizing obsolete property rehabilitation certificate at 409 Adams Street.
Need a motion to adopt. Been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Being none? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, you at motions and this laniness business.
Uh, Councilwoman, uh, John Humphries, now would be a good time for you to talk for the next couple hours, preventing these Michigan people from being there, but that, I, I know it. I know. But, I know that the gentleman you are.
Move to adjourn.
The gentleman you are, I think it's very good. So, anything other, uh, any other business?
I do have to do this, sir. Uh, we, we've been kicking his can down the road here at the City Council about this house on Washington. Um, we have not done anything, we don't have any developers. I understand the, uh, other council, uh, members concerned about trying to, uh, restore this house, but we, it, we've been going over and over and over. We don't have anybody that want to buy that house. Uh, I haven't heard anybody. Have you guys heard anybody?
Actually, there's something in progress. There's no, no developer.
There's someone working on a project right now. Whether it'll come to fruition.
How long do you think that's going to take?
Hopefully, no more than a couple of months.
Yeah. I'm trying, I'm trying to be patient with, with my fellow council people about this house. And I think it's holding up some development that could happen in the city of Saginaw and the river. I mean, we're talking about we want to do some nice things down there and we got this big raggedy house that probably going to cost, who knows how much money to restore. And, um, and I think we've been more than patient with our rest of councilman people.
What do you connect you with about this? And so, you at least know what's going on.
What, I, I'm not going to, they, they need to connect to the city and talk to them about buying the house.
Well, they have. They absolutely have.
Well, I, if I could, if I could bring, uh, council members. There was a presentation, uh, from, um, Rick, was it Rick? Alex Mixer. Um, and, uh, a publicity type thing, I think he, he, he would like to do. Uh, we met with the manager, uh, Mayor Pro Tem and myself met with him. Uh, I'm very skeptical about this, uh, but, uh, I felt that maybe a month, uh, give him a chance. We've already had it on the market numerous times, um, and, uh, with, talking with our manager, uh, we felt that we needed to have a credible, uh, agency or a buyer who meets the criteria and if not in 30 mon, 30 days or so, uh, we should, we should, uh, make a motion to, to take it down. That's, that would, that's what I feel should do. So, uh, Councilman Balls, I would not be, uh, um, I, I would suggest that, uh, this come up at our next council meeting or the, or, and we'll send, we, we do have a presentation. I think there was a presentation he sent to us. We can share that with all council members so you can see what that is. We'll share it to you, but please, uh, stay on it, uh, keeping us, uh, on board, if that's all right.
Our timeline because we, we have, I, I believe we can, um, locate funds in this fiscal year to demolish the home. So, he's aware of that timeframe and he has, essentially has a few months to work on it. Um, if we were going to do that, I believe, um, Mr. Stempel was in the meeting as well. We told him by June 1st to get us something. And he's, uh, he's contacted me again to update me, so he's, he is working on it and talking to people, but he's aware of our concerns and he's aware of what, um, he would need to have, um, to get something done and he's aware of the time, timeliness of the matter.
See you bet. Thank you for bringing that up again. Any other business before council?
I would just like to say I'm, I'm in agreement that I would like to see it on a regular council agenda, so other interested parties in the community can also know it's coming up rather than catching it under our unfinished business line. So, if it's something either for a presentation or as an item in our agenda.
And see if we can put it on one of our agenda items coming up. Is that, uh, okay? We'll put, we'll put it on a, 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 upcoming. I, I, although I will tell you that May is very crowded, uh, and very packed, uh, but we do have regular business to do anyways, uh, so it could, it could be an item on, on there. So, okay. Okay. Anything else before us? Anything else? Yes.
Is, is now the time you want me to start talking?
Slow down.
Now's the time?
Yeah.
Okay. Move to adjourn.
Okay. So, you have a motion to adjourn, supported. Is there any further discussion? Being none? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed? Word.